Welcome to the Board of Education Regular Board Meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 26th. Has this meeting been compliant with open meeting laws or noticed?
Yes, it has.
Could you please call roll?
Olmstead?
Here.
Peschall?
Here.
Solaji?
Here.
Carlin?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. Cartwright.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, in which we stand.
All right, we'll start the meeting off with Board, the Board's President's Report, and obviously Barb is not here tonight, so we will be skipping that and moving right on to number two, the Superintendent's Report. So, Dr. Cartwright?
Most certainly.
Oh, actually, I want to amend the agenda for tonight. I kind of forgot a moment. I'm wondering if someone would, could recommend to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the Legislative Committee Workshop to September, when all Board members could be present. I think that that would be best when we're all here to have that discussion for that committee. So I would just need, we would need a first and a second.
Since that's my committee, I will gladly make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So then we're just skipping the second workshop for the evening, we're just having the first.
I do believe we need a roll call for that.
Yeah, Jackie, could you do a roll call?
Yes.
Thank you.
Peschall?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Cartwright.
So we'll go ahead and get started right away with the Superintendent's Good News Report. It is going to be a little bit of a briefer report this time, as you know, because this is the last, last push right before we start school. So, this school year starts a new chapter in public education, and this week, we are excited to welcome back our teachers and school staff. Our staff are busy preparing their classrooms, engaging in professional development, and planning for the upcoming school year. We are excited to welcome our students to the 2020-2021 School Year on Tuesday, September 1st, whether they are joining us in person or virtually. Congratulations are in order for many of our high school baseball players. For the fourth year in a row, the Oshkosh West Varsity Baseball Team received the American Baseball Coaches Association Team Academic Excellence Award for their cumulative 3.24 GPA during last school year. Additionally, two senior baseball players from Oshkosh West and two from Oshkosh North, along with one of our coaches, were selected to participate in the first-ever Fox Valley Area Senior All-Star Baseball Game hosted by the Wisconsin Timber Rattlers in early August. Earlier this month, our teachers and paraprofessionals were able to learn from a Project Life National Coordinator during three full days of staff development and curriculum training. As previously announced, the Oshkosh 20th Avenue YMCA has partnered with the Oshkosh Area School District to provide an off-site location for OASD Project Life interns. Twelve juniors and seniors will participate in Project Life this year, which focuses on supporting high school students that are in need of a more life-skills-based curriculum. On this screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time for the past couple of weeks. So with that, at this point in time, I would like to know the desire of the Board, if there's any reports, written reports, that you would like for staff to report out on.
Did you ever really get a chance to read those? Do you want any of them pulled to?
Is it possible for iReady?
Yes, I do. That is one I was going down the line, if anybody wanted the referendum or COVID or fund transfer. I would like the iReady Diagnostic Assessment Instruction. I would like to, um, let them to report out on that for a few minutes, yeah.
Would you like, I'll go ahead and start. Okay, sounds good. Um, as you know, that we have been using iReady for the past three years, mainly for assessments and to help inform what we are doing in the classroom, specifically in math and literacy. We started at the middle school and fifth grade level, and then expanded it to elementary with the assessment pieces. Then we started piloting instruction, and then, in March, came at-home learning and our response to COVID-19. And during that time, Curriculum and Associates, who is the vendor for iReady, we were allowed, since we were a customer, to use online instruction, the iReady mathematics and the iReady reading, and we were able to have free access to that up until June 30th. And we definitely used that during at-home learning. So from there, we really felt like this was a valuable supplemental instructional tool that we want to continue to use and we want to have access to K through eight. But with that, we don't get free access anymore. We need to, um, we need to pay for that service. And so that is what that, and that is over the threshold for, um, for purchasing and needs to come to the Board.
Thank you. So, do you want to have questions? Thank you. Does anyone else have any reports that they want anybody to come up and talk about?
Can, I'd like to hear just high points on the referendum update and the COVID update, please.
Okay.
Dr. Gunlock?
Mr. Kammer?
So, let's start with the referendum update.
I didn't hear the question?
Just an update on the written report related to the referendum update.
Oh, um, well, there isn't much to update on the referendum update, other than the fact that we have a, we've been creating some information in the background, ready to go. We have some, um, you know, obviously, we've been working on the startup of schools, so it's kind of important not to override those communications with referendum communications right now. So, the main focus has been preparing the informational items, which we have had great progress with, and answering questions, which we've been able to do. And we just started to schedule some of the meetings with various meeting leaders. So, I think we, I think I put it in the report, I don't have it in front of me, but we have two or three ready to go.
Yeah.
We expect to have quite a few more of those once school has been started. And the biggest thing that we're going to be preparing for, we have a meeting next week, I believe, is for the parent information nights and what they call a watch party. So rather than do the same, the types of training we had done with the previous referendum, this time, we're going to do it somewhat virtually. So the buildings will schedule a watch party, and at subsequent board meetings, I'll provide you with more detailed information as that gets closer. And they'll be able to do the watch parties and ask and get their questions answered, and then we'll be off to the races from that point forward. We realize we have a relatively short runway between now and November, and we would have started a little bit earlier, but obviously, parents' main focus right now, and our main focus, is the safe startup of schools.
Thank you. So, the watch parties, just kind of explain that a little bit more. Is that, is that open to the public? Is that open to the families of that certain school, or?
Yeah, yeah. So, so what we've always done in the past is the schools have always been very interested in how can we get the information out. And we've, we've had sort of trainings in terms of, here's how you can get information out for, for parents. So we are asking the schools to establish a watch party and identify those people who might be interested, as has been in the past. And anybody obviously can attend, but it, it would allow us to give the information in front of them. Barb did our training last time, we'll do it again. And she does such a nice job of telling people what you can do, what you can't do, and how to make sure we do this properly.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Dr. Gunlock.
Thank you.
Mr. Kammer?
Good evening. I'll be providing a summary of the COVID update. There are three key pieces to the report that was submitted. The first is a summary of the data in the Winnebago County Weekly Report. So remember, this report covers a two-week period, and this particular report covered the weeks between August 5th and August 18th. So, there was a bit of a change from the last report. If you remember last time, the geographic area of the Oshkosh Area School District boundary, which is used to make this determination, was considered in the high range, based on the burden status. This time around, we're in moderately high category. Our case rate was 99.5. Keep in mind, anything over 100 is considered high, so we're right on the borderline of that moderately high, high, high category. We also look at age groups and focus in on that, particularly elementary age group, middle school and high school. If you recall last time, each of those age groups was in the moderately high category. This time around, our elementary group was in the moderate category, our middle school group was in the low category, and our high school group was in the high category. So, there will be a new report coming out tomorrow, and we'll see how that has changed, if it has at all. The second part of the report focuses in on a report that came out from the Department of Health Services for the state of Wisconsin this past week. And it included a lot of information that we've really been waiting for, pertaining to when we should exclude both students and staff from our schools, and that what criteria are we going to use to allow them back. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't mean we no longer consult with the Health Department on these issues, because that is still the primary way that we make that determination, but it gives us a little bit more guidance to go off of, which is very, very helpful for us at the school district. So, the report also included more information on contact tracing and how the school district can assist in that process. So contact tracing is what the County Health Department does. Anytime there's a positive case, they talk with the individual and try to determine who has been in close contact with that person. So, the criteria they use for that is who's been within 60 to that person for a total of 15 minutes or more, within 24 hours. Have they had direct contact with anyone, direct physical contact? And then, was there any contact with any type of discharge from that individual? So, um, the, the way the school district can help is that if there's a positive case in our schools, we can provide information to the Health Department in terms of seating charts, what cohort the student is, and that sort of thing. So it makes their job a little bit easier in terms of trying to identify who we have been exposed in these situations. The last part of the report included an update on our Rise Up Program. So our Rise Up Program is our comprehensive mental health framework that includes a collaborative with Catalpa Health and Samaritan Counseling. So Catalpa Health provides clinical therapy for our students in need. Samaritan Health conducts the Wellness Screen each year in grades eight through 12. Both programs are moving to a completely virtual model, which is going to have a lot of advantages for us as a district. From Catalpa's standpoint, it's going to provide a lot more flexibility in terms of making appointments. It's also going to broaden the group of students that we can provide this service to. So if you think of our eAcademy students, they would not be able to access this service if it was offered face-to-face only. So the fact that it's virtual allows us to target more students, and then, that flexibility also helps out with intake meetings, because that is a lot of time, time is a barrier. Intake meetings, we have to get parents physically present to participate. And this way, our intake meetings can take place virtually, so that is easier for many parents, and hopefully, it will cause more students to become engaged in the therapy. Along with that, you know, one of the challenges has been, you know, the, the service can't look different depending on which model. It has to be consistent. And by being in a virtual, by offering this virtually, it allows us to easily adjust in whichever model we're in. So, if we started in a hybrid model, you know, it's not going to look much different if we moved to completely virtual or come back completely in person. It's something that can be adaptable to each of those. And that's the same thing with the Wellness Screen. One of the biggest challenges with the Wellness Screen this year is trying to schedule and figure out which group of students are going to participate on which days. So by using the virtual model, that becomes a lot easier for our screeners in that students who are doing at-home learning can participate the same day students who are in school can participate. So, the follow-up part of that won't look any different, and again, it's really adaptable to all four models. And then just to give one final update, this wasn't included in the report, but it is COVID-related, just on some of the happenings that have taken place this week. There's been a lot going on in terms of preparation. So, some of the newer developments in that, the district has changed the type of disinfectant that we're going to be using in most cases in our classrooms. So, if you remember from the last meeting, we talked about Quad 5, Quad 5. Quad 25 is what we're going to be using, and that has a dwell time of about 10 minutes, which was a bit long when we need to make transitions in our classrooms. So, Quad 5, the, the new disinfectant that we're going to be using has a three-minute dwell time, and then it can be wiped down after that. So hopefully, that'll make transitions a little bit easier, and it's just as effective as the Quad 25 with that longer dwell time. Along with that, the Quad 5, it is in a different form, so there really is not much of a hazard at all to skin contact. So, to use a product, there's, there's no specification that requires any special PPE or anything like that. So gloves wouldn't be necessary in order to apply them. Maintenance has also been very busy distributing the masks that were ordered for our students. So, every school receives an allocation of both cloth and disposable masks, both adult-sized for older students and child-sized for younger students. We also have a supply of face shields that, that many staff have been accessing, especially our, our health staff. We've distributed PPE to them as well. So in addition to the face shields, the medical brave masks, they also have gloves, gowns, and some other things that they're going to be needing for their health needs. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. If I may, just a, an emphasis a little bit, going back to what Mr. Kammer was talking about with the report from Winnebago County that's broken out by school districts, those kind of things. For elementary school, the elementary school age was in the moderately high category, so it's remained there. And the burden rate on that is actually at 99.7, which is right at that threshold of almost going over to the high category. So I just wanted to emphasize that and make sure that we all had that common knowledge as well. Thank you, Mr. Kammer.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
The Rise Up Program and the screening, are we going to be doing that for eAcademy also? For the high school age, how we do that? The monitor, the, the screening, are we going to be able to do that for eAcademy students if they're going virtual?
Yeah, because eAcademy isn't a separate school, and those students are still included in our school entities, they'll, they'll be involved with that screening process if they choose to participate.
Awesome, thank you.
I just had a quick question. Did you say our teachers are going to be wearing gowns?
No, no, the, the gowns are available for our health staff.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So those individuals who are working in their health offices or potentially in their isolation rooms.
Thank you.
That would have been interesting. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Peschall?
So, um, we've received some, some questions about the Plexiglas desk, desktops and such. And so, my question is, are those, explain how those are going to be used or implemented in the rooms? Because the way that I understand is that not, not every room is going to have one of these desktops there. So can we just explain the, the implementation of those?
Absolutely. So, we do have the, the personal Plexiglas dividers that are available when needed in the district. And the times when we need those are when students cannot adequately social distance. So, being in a hybrid model, that allows us to have an easier time social distancing, because we have half the number of students in our schools and a lot of our classrooms. But given the layout of some of our classrooms, some of the seating options in some of our classrooms, that's still a challenge in some instances. So in those instances where social distancing continues to be a challenge, we can use those barriers to provide, provide an extra layer of protection for our students and staff. The other primary purpose is for when students are eating lunch, because they're not going to have their masks on for an extended period of time during lunch, the barriers provide that extra layer of, of protection for individuals who are around at that time.
All right, can I then follow up a question? Maybe it's more of a comment than, than it is a question. At no point, at any point would these be used as a way to isolate, say, a student that is in the class that may not be behaving correctly?
No.
Does that make sense?
Correct.
So, because I don't, I don't want to further isolate, you know, then, and that to be used as a, as a tool to do that, so.
It is not meant for disciplinary actions.
Okay.
It is truly meant for, at this point, for a health, for health purposes.
Okay. So then my, my, I guess my follow-up question to that is, is that, is that clear across the Board? I mean, have we, have we communicated that, that specific aspect?
We will make sure that our, our principals are aware of that.
Okay. We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, well, if people are using a face shield, will they also be wearing a mask?
In most instances, yes. The only exception would be if they have some sort of medical accommodation. For, for some of our students and staff, wearing an actual face mask can, can exacerbate health issues. So in some of those instances, the, the next level now, in terms of protection, would be a face shield. And for some of our, our students, particularly our students with severe asthma, that is a good option for them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kammer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kammer.
Thank you. All right, well then, moving on to other reports. I think we have, do we have any reports?
Oh, I bet you we do. I'm looking at my folder. He did have a meeting.
Just sort of, I think.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay. We can just do it next time. Okay. So moving on to then, non-agenda-related public forum, and we have no one signed up for that one, and then... Could I get advisement on that?
We've tolerated that.
Just, yeah?
They get three minutes.
Okay. Oh, sure, okay.
Name and address and...
Absolutely, yeah. You can come on up to either of the podiums then? Oh, yeah, they don't have, I would go here then. I'm so sorry, they don't have, um...
Yep.
I'm going to read our, the process for that first quick. It says if, um, "When addressing the Board clearly..." You didn't get a number, so. "Your name and address and the agenda topic you wish to, to address. You are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group or individuals. Please indicate the group you represent. State clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the Superintendent's Office at 920-424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. Please understand that in accordance with the parliamentary procedure, this is your opportunity to speak before the Board. It is not a questioning and answer session, nor is it the opportunity to engage in a debate with the Board." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Stazak. I live on Prairie Wood Drive. I have two children, one at Oakwood when I was high, and I'd like to just share a little bit of my background. I am a nurse practitioner in the community. I have been in the trenches of COVID since the beginning. I've been seeing, treating, diagnosing, testing COVID patients firsthand. And speaking on behalf of myself, I'm not associating with any employment, anything like that. I'm speaking as a parent today, more than anything, with a little bit of additional background. I'd like to offer my personal perspective as a parent and what this means for our children, in particular, in particular elementary school children. I'm in no way downplaying the pandemic. The health and safety of our children is obviously first priority. The recent email today suggested, and I'm going to quote what it said, "We need to be prepared based on objective data and staffing challenges. We expect to be forced to activate our virtual learning module four." So I take, how I took this email is that because there is a shortage of teachers, substitute teachers, it's forcing this online at-home learning. We've had since March, the Board has had since March to prepare for this, and I feel like this is a very unacceptable reason to move to module four learning because of a shortage. There's many issues which you guys have probably already heard. Most obvious is full-time working parents, single-family households, where it's impossible to homeschool a child. My other really big concern with this is many children have undiagnosed learning disabilities. They don't have 504s and IUP plans in place. These children are going to really suffer if we have to switch to 100% virtual learning. We can make decisions for Oshkosh School District based on what Appleton is doing, what Winnebago County is doing. We have to do what's right for our city, for our community. I, I did hear the prior gentleman speak about, you know, the moderate, moderate, high category. I feel like numbers, especially with the media, can get really twisted, and I'm going to present some more numbers. And I did get this from Winnebago Health Department. It just offers a little bit of a different perspective on the numbers of COVID. We have been doing really great in Winnebago County. Our downward trend is continuing to go downward. Last two weeks, we are at 3.8% positive percentage cases. What that means is out of everyone that we test in the community, only 3.8% of those people are positive for COVID. This is down from 4.3% for prior two weeks. So out of all those people, only 3.8% of people in the community are positive for COVID. In school age number, this, in school age children, this number is almost nonexistent. From August 5th to 18th, in the Oshkosh School District, there were four cases of children aged five to nine, zero cases for ages 10 to 14. These haven't changed since July. I actually spoke with the Health Department today. Three of those four children contacted from a household.
10 seconds.
American Association of Pediatrics just released a new study that children are not likely to catch the virus or transmitted, and this has been comparable to other studies as well from around the country. So, I think this really needs to be considered when you guys are making decisions. I don't know where that moderate or moderate high is coming from, but if you're looking at the actual numbers, there's only three, you know, four cases in the last month of a child's, school age child getting COVID.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to agenda-related public forum. We don't have anyone for that. Okay, moving on to our first workshop, and only workshop, which is the Number One Oshkosh 2021 School Year Plan. Dr. Jones?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Oops, sorry about that. Trying to do two things here at once. The Board asked us to do a quick review of the handbook for, for you, so we prepared this document for you. So, what we did is, first of all, we want to let our viewing public know that this will be posted on our webpage as well, and there's some resources here on the webpage, instructional models, et cetera. There are five different electronic resources that is, that this information is based off of. In the handbook, there are eight different chapters, so we tried to do a, highlights of each chapter for you. So in Chapter 1, it talks about operations in specifically healthy environments. And again, in our ventilation, we've installed new filters district-wide. These filters are different filters than what we were using before that do catch the, the virus. The cleaning, we've talked a lot about, but again, the cleaning, the classrooms will be done after every class, and our teaching staff will be assisting with that. Mr. Kammer just talked about that. High-touch points will be disinfected regularly throughout the day. In shared supplies and communal items, students will have, we want students to have their own supplies this year, such as pens, pencils, scissors, those types of, of things. Again, when they come back, they're going to find that the drinking fountains have been turned off. And what we will be asking people to do is bring their own water bottles and have their name on it. And the, each of the, the vast majority of our drinking fountains have a, a fill station where people can place their bottle under the, the bubbler or drinking fountain and fill up their water bottles. Another change that you're going to see when students return is that the restrooms will have only a limited amount of students. Another change that you're going to see when students return is that the restrooms will have only a limited amount of students allowed in a bathroom at any given time. Our staff are going to feel some changes as well. The staff lounges now are strictly going to be used for warming food and not for gathering. Again, just to keep our social distancing. And again, our message probably that Mr. Kammer has said, but it's worth repeating, is hand washing is preferred over hand sanitizers, and you'll see later that we'll have an abundance of hand sanitizers available, but we will be allowing times for students to wash their hands. That is the best practice. Also, when they return back, the hallways are going to look a little different. There may be one-way hallways that we ask people to go just one direction instead of two directions. The classrooms, we've taken a lot of the furniture out of the classrooms to create more space for social distancing. They'll see that. Our employees, again, I think we've covered this before, but our employees will be doing a self-check every day, and then they report out on our portal that they've done their check each day, a self-check. Our visitors and students, when they come to the building, we've just kind of made this known that the handbook is available to everyone and that these protocols are not optional, they are required. If students fail to follow these protocols, we'll use our normal progressive discipline with them. And if visitors refuse to follow our protocols, they'll be asked to leave the school site. In our second, second portion of the handbook, we talk about managing physical spaces. As, if you've visited our schools yet, you have seen that we've installed a lot of physical barriers, and again, Mr. Kammer has talked about those, in our, in our high-traffic areas such as offices and other areas. You'll see that we have safety signage posted throughout the school, encouraging hand washing and good hygiene practices. And again, as I alluded to already, the hand sanitizing stations will be placed throughout the building and even on our buses as well. Another change students are going to see in regards to physical spaces is lockers. Our secondary students, grade six through 12, that would be middle and high school, you're going to see that they are not allowed to have their lockers. So no students will have lockers temporarily until COVID ends, but they will be permitted to carry their backpacks instead, so... By the way, that's not a real big change at the high school, to be quite honest with you, so... Social distancing, again, I think we all know this by now, but students will be spread out, and they must follow social distancing guidelines. And at all levels, we're encouraging teachers not to have people face-to-face or facing each other, et cetera, when possible. There's questions about our isolation rooms. They've been established at each school, and they will... This is a room, as Mr. Kammer has alluded to already, but these are rooms when somebody's not feeling well or is possibly showing signs, they'll be taken to an isolation room, and their parents will be contacted. The next area we're looking at is food service and cafeteria protocols. Again, we obviously are going to have some changes there. The first one is that the cash will not be accepted any longer in food service lines. There'll be plastic barriers placed in key areas in the lunchroom. Students cannot share food. This is a big one, especially at the elementary level. They cannot share food, any food, at any time. We had microwaves available generally at the secondary schools. Again, that would be our middle and high schools, and we have taken those out. Again, a change that you'll see, elementary students will now be having breakfast in the classroom. Our middle school students can also have breakfast in the classroom if they so choose. And we will continue our grab-and-go meals, and this will be important to know because when students are on an A-B schedule, they will be getting their lunch the day before. So if you're at school today, you'll get your lunch for tomorrow because you're not at school. The next area we talked about was operations, and this is day-to-day procedures under this category. All visitors, as you come to our schools, are going to have their temperatures taken before gaining entry into the school. This will apply to every person coming to the school. Face coverings by straight order as well, but just a reminder, will be required for all people, including our visitors. Parents who want to pick up their child for appointments, such as dental appointments, other things, midday, will call the school, and we will make sure that they exit the building and arrive at your car safely. Students should, again, have their own supplies. We talked that a little bit about, again, markers, crayons, et cetera. We don't want people sharing supplies. And again, our students, we're asking them to keep a social distancing at all times. There'll be markings on the floor and other areas to help them remember, and even outside. Elementary students, the change that they will see is that students will stay in their classroom, and we call, usually call these the specials, which is the Fayed class, art and music. Last year, they would go to the Fayed room, the art room, the music room, but this year, those teachers will be coming to their classroom. There may be a need at times for them to go to other areas, but right now, they'll be coming to the classroom or taking them outside. All Ashkosh area students are invited to arrive at school just in time to go straight to their first-hour class. This is very important for our parents. Normally, dropping your son or daughter off early is a good thing, but this year, in the situations that we have, we're asking parents and students who drive to school and get to school on their own to try to do it as close to that first-hour class or first class that they have. So ideally, if they could just have a few minutes to get out of their car, come inside, and go straight to their class. That's the ideal. We're looking for, just again, so students aren't congregating in large numbers outside of the school. Continuing with operations, all students and staff are required to wear face masks, including, as we said, our visitors, but everybody inside as well. Field trips are temporarily suspended until further notice, and when we use the word temporarily suspended, we mean until COVID changes. So at the moment, there will be no field trips with that. Large gatherings, as you know, are a problem, and so due to that, concerts and all school assemblies or large gatherings, again, are temporarily suspended until further notice. As you already know, but as a reminder to our public, all high school fall athletics have been moved to the spring. And again, our safety drills, we take safety in Ashkosh very seriously. Those drills will continue, but they'll be modified to accommodate social distancing. Recession, we will have the cohorts stay together and use their own playground equipment for that individual cohort. When we say cohort, we mean class. That would include, they'll have each class, so Mrs. Smith's fourth-grade class will have their own set of, you know, soccer balls and jump ropes, et cetera. And, you know, Mr. Jones's class, even if it's in the same grade, will have a different set of jump ropes and balls, et cetera, to play with. At the evening, all of those playground equipment items will be disinfected each night. And again, students will be expected to wash their hands, as I alluded to already in this presentation, at various times during the day. That would include, one example is before and after recess. So going out and coming in, they'll be washing their hands, not disinfecting, but washing. The next area we'd like to provide some overview on is transportation. And in our buses, we're going to be asking that only two students, a maximum of two students can be in a seat. The buses, when they fill or load students, will fill from the back to the front. A maximum of 48 students will be allowed on what we would normally have a 72-passenger bus. We're going to be asking that families and households, who, students that are in the same household, that they sit together on the bus. The bus will have assigned seating, and the buses will be disinfected between routes if the bus is used for more than one route. On the bus, face coverings will be required on the bus at all times. Again, no food will be allowed on the bus or be allowed to be shared. As mentioned already, hand sanitizers will be available on every bus. And when the weather's nice and it's possible, the windows will be lowered to increase ventilation and make it more comfortable. This next area we're into is instructional models. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Mrs. Mojer.
Hello, everyone. Julie Conrad, Director of Career Analysis Assessment. The Ashkosh Area School District has, like we've said before, we have the five different models, everywhere from traditional to fully virtual. And we, as we are expecting, we are going to travel through those models and use those models whenever needed and when our data supports that. So you have seen this graphic before. Also, as a reminder, there is a full-page graphic that has more detailed explanation in a PDF format. It is located on our website as well. But first, starting with Model One, that's our traditional in-person learning, where we're basically back to what everybody would consider normal at school, right? Model Two is that we, everybody is going to school face-to-face five days a week, but we do have safety protocols such as face covering still in place. Model Three, which we are predicting to be in, or we are in, starting with September 1st, is our hybrid model, where we have a mix of in-person and remote. So every other day, a student is in-person with their teacher, or they are at home or virtual. Model Four is where we are 100% virtual, and all students are receiving their instruction remotely. And please keep in mind that if we're in Model Four, we can shift to Model Four for a classroom, for a school, or for the whole district as we, as we need and as data is there. And then the last part, and outside of the four models, is some of our families have elected to do E-Academy, which is 100% virtual for the whole entire school year, so that a student and their families is not shifting in and out of these models. They are going to be 100% virtual in with their E-Academy classroom the entire school year. So one of the things that's special and that is complex and hard to understand, it's the Model Three and the A-B calendar. And so listed here is the link. This was also sent out to families as the A-B calendar. And the other thing is that our teachers and our support staff are amazing, and we've already had teachers come up with visual calendars and other things to help families and help students understand, when am I going to be virtual and when am I going to be in-person? And so you can expect some of our teachers in schools to share those visual calendars and those visual models with you to help families better understand. So in the calendar, the published calendar that we have out there is going to remain unchanged. And so whenever we need to shift into a Model Three or Hybrid, we will pick up on whatever date and for that A-group, B-group. But the big thing to keep in mind here, and so let me talk through this, is a student's group assignment. The group assignment signifies which day they attend school virtually. And the reason that we went with, it shows which day it attends virtually is because that's the day that they will check in or do attendance inside an infinite campus to say, "I'm here," and check in. So that's why the Group A, Group B feels a little bit different than how we originally explained it. So A-group, and the A-group students are virtual on A or red days and in-person on B or blue days. And once again, this is where our teachers were amazing, coming up with visuals. And B-group, B-group students are virtual on B, which is blue, and in-person on A, red days. So in each of those groups have been designated out, and there are some students, like our E-Academy students, their group is designated as virtual, right? Because they're going to be taking their attendance 100% virtual. And I'm going to turn it over to Kim Brown.
Yeah, and so, of course, we want to know, what does this look like? So in last spring, we had what we called at-home learning, and this is very diff, the hybrid is very different. So the at-home learning, as you recall, was really a focus where we maintained skills for students. There wasn't new learning that was being pushed out by teachers, but they were checking in with kids and making sure that they were maintaining some of those skills. The hybrid is going to look different, and you'll see separated, the hybrid the first two weeks and hybrid beyond two weeks. And the reason why is because in the first two weeks, we have our students coming from 4K through fifth grade, and some of them is the first time that they've ever used technology before, and they're also needing to form relationships. And so for the first two weeks, the teachers are going to focus on creating relationships and helping the students know how to use their Chromebook. And so, and we want to do that so that when they do go home, the third week, the students are going to feel like they can do what they need to, and they're going to know how to use Google Classroom. Or for the three schools that are doing Canvas, they'll be using Canvas. So beyond that two weeks, then the students will be receiving mostly asynchronous and some synchronous learning as well. And so with that, the asynchronous, they'll be, they'll be in their classroom one day and get the instruction, and the next day, they will have either a recording of the teaching that's going on, or they'll be able to come in and view it with the teacher depending.
The other, the other piece with this is that in the instructional models is that we will be different than at-home learning in the spring, is that all of our students will be receiving grades, scores, report cards, progress reports, et cetera, because we had suspended that before, because once again, we did not know how things were going to look when we went into at-home learning in the spring. So for instructional models at the secondary level, keep in mind that when we were at-home learning in spring 2020, remember, we had students were able to elect pass/fail, and we were focusing on essential standards and content for a particular course or grade level, and we were mostly doing asynchronous with teachers and students connecting during office hours to assist students. As we go into the school year, teachers will be focusing on creating relationships. Once again, making sure, especially like I think about our sixth graders, that are going to be using Canvas or the learning management system for the first time, we're going to be focusing on helping them know how to use their tools and access all of their learning and their assignments. And the other thing is, we are going to be maximizing in-person learning. We're not going to click on it, but we have been working with teachers in a sample planning template saying, "How do we think about maximizing the activities and the things that we're doing with students when we have them in person?" When we go to hybrid beyond that, once again, we're going to maximize in-person. And one of the phrases that Kim and I have been using with all of our teachers at all levels is, remember, this is not about maintaining skills. This is about accelerate, not remediate. How do we make sure that we are supporting students so that they are accessing grade-level, on-course-level content and learning and making sure then that they have supports alongside of it? So the universal curriculum with supports for students. And in all actuality, this doesn't, it doesn't matter if it's hybrid, or if we're in Model Two, or you happen to be a student in E-Academy. We are adopting this mantra across all of our learning environments, accelerate, not remediate. Also, in all four instructional models and E-Academy, you, students and families will be receiving progress reports, report cards, and they will be issued as normal, using letter grades for academics and 4-3-2-1 for life and career skills at the middle level. So it will feel like it's back to normal with report cards and progress reporting.
Thank you.
Hold on.
I had one, this is just a small, when are they going to be picking up their Chromebooks?
They are going to be getting their Chromebooks on the first day that they are in-person. So let me, let me back up. So for our students that are in Model Three, so all of our students in K through 12, they will be getting their Chromebooks on the first day they're learning. So A, students that are in the A-group that are red, they are going to be virtual that first day, but obviously, they're not going to have their Chromebook right yet. So technically, their first day of school or in-person is September 2nd, right? So the first day that you're with us, you will be getting your Chromebook. Students that are in E-Academy, they will be picking up their Chromebook at their home schools. Either they can get, pick it up Thursday, or they can pick it up Friday if they can't make those times. We have other arrangements that they can help to get that. they can't meet those times. We have other arrangements that they can help to get that Chromebook, because all our E-Academy students start virtually September 1st.
Okay, thank you.
I just want clarification for Dr. Brown. For elementary school students, when will they be getting their Chromebooks?
Same, same model. On the very first day of school that they are attending, they'll receive their Chromebook, and then they're going to start learning how to use it. So you know, the first week and the second week are both four-day weeks. So when you think about that, the students will have four days of figuring out how to use their Chromebook before they take it home. In between, the teachers will give out, you know, books to read, some of the math assignments, those types of things, but it will not be on their Chromebook yet.
So the next area of the handbook is regards to flexible and responsive staffing. All staff will be expected to help with subbing. This year, it's going to be critical, more than, than any other year. There is, the district has a critical shortage of subs due to COVID-19. And if I may take a moment just to elaborate, to explain that, the majority of our subs are retired educators. And the educators are little, obviously, if they're retirement age, they're also in the age that could be affected very harshly by COVID-19. The vast majority of them have chosen not to sub until this crisis has passed. We normally have somewhere at 250, approximately 250 subs available i-in the district in a given year. And, and when we have 250 subs, we still have a shortage at times at certain dates, because not all 250 subs can sub at all at the same time. Sometimes, they can't sub on a Thursday, or a Friday, or whatever. Right now, our subs are approximately about, oh, drastically reduced, drastically reduced, a number that, that's, that's going to be very critical to us. So as a result of that, staff may be pulled from other duties to assist, to make sure that we have coverage for, for classes. And again, as stated already, this is going to be a critical factor for us this year. It's going to be very, very challenging.
I just want to follow up for a moment, if, for the board's knowledge, that we have been looking at a variety of different ways in which to increase our substitute teacher pool. So we're, we're having conversations with, for example, at UWO, for some of their students, you know, that already have their associate's degrees, in order to be able to help provide opportunities for them to come in and substitute teach with us from that perspective. We've also been looking at a few other ways in which to try to do this. We are actively and earnestly trying to recruit people to apply for the positions of substitute teachers. So for the general community, if you're interested, we would love, love for you to submit your application so that we can go ahead and continue to increase that pool, because i-it is a critical factor. Unfortunately, if a teacher is out ill, and yes, while we're going to be, we are being very creative right now on filling those positions, but when we get to a point where, even with the creative solutions, and we don't have substitutes available, we have no one to supervise children. So I just wanted to make sure that there's a common understanding of this. It's not that we're not trying, because we are in earnest trying and have been trying for an extended period of time now.
What are some of the requirements that a person would need if they were interested in applying?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Evans. They just need to contact the HR office, and we can provide them with an application. Most people might think that you might need a four-year degree in order to sub, but you can also sub with an associate's degree as
Okay. We need to, again, bring the attention to the board that some different scenarios may happen, and I underlur, underline the word "may." Julie had also mentioned this as well, but because, because of this, this shortage of personnel and COVID, you know, if we have, have some, some health concerns as well, we may be shutting a, just a school down. So you might hear that, you know, Traeger Elementary is closed today, and that would mean they would be moving to virtual. Closed might should be, I should correct my words, just moving to a different model. In other words, we won't have children face-to-face. That's, that's the possibility that's new this year that, that we haven't had in any other year. It could be, again, more than one school. It could be the whole district, possibly, if there was a health outbreak. So just want to bring that attention to the community and to the board, that it could, you know, we could see where 10 people were exposed or, or have come down with COVID, and we don't have enough subs to cover that building, we may have to move to a virtual model to, to accommodate that. So the learning will continue, it's just what form it will take. Does that make sense? Okay, moving on. Matt?
So Section 8 of the handbook was recently updated to align with the DHS guidance that I've mentioned earlier. And in the handbook, that, that updated guidance is in red box if you're interested. But really, what it details are the criteria the district is going to be using to exclude both students and staff from in-person instruction. So we can, we can click on the link here and just show you what that looks like, you know, the control of this part of the document. Could jump to Section 8.2, I think. Yeah, so the criteria that we're using for exclusion is the same criteria that we're using for isolation, for students that demonstrate symptoms in school setting. And I know it's probably hard to read from, from, this is where you're seated, but there are some pieces that we're going to be considering any time we're going to be excluding a student or staff member. So these questions, or some of these questions, are posted on every one of our entrances for our schools. And really, what we want is for staff to internalize the symptoms of, of COVID and understand the instances of which they would, you could be excluded from school. So the key ones here, you know, if anybody has a fever, and they take a fever-reducing medication, that should exclude them from coming in. We don't want people who are potentially contagious in our buildings. Along with that, if anybody has tested positive for COVID and has not been given their quarantine as it's directed by the NDA GoCom Health Department, also should not come to school. Along with that, anybody who's been in contact in the past two weeks with anybody who has tested positive for COVID-19 should not be coming in. And then finally, in the past 24 hours, if anybody experiences any of the symptoms that are listed, which include a cough, shortness of breath, chest congestion, congestion, mucus and taste or smell, vomiting, diarrhea, if they have any of those symptoms, they should not report. And then we have another section where if it's two or more symptoms, which are a bit more minor, right? Body aches, headaches, sore throat, fatigue, congestion, or a nose nausea. Those are common symptoms of a lot of different things. But if there's two or more present, we would like to hear on the side of keeping people home, just to make sure that, that we're not exposing others in these situations. Now, there are some gray areas, believe, that are not as clear-cut as these guidelines seem. There are some situations that pop up. And in these situations, the district is going to be very liberal in terms of keeping students out if there's a potential for exposure. So one example of a situation that may not align completely with these guidelines, if a student, a student or staff member has someone in their family who may not have tested positive for COVID, but maybe they have some signs and symptoms themselves, and have recently been in contact with someone else who tested positive, well, these guidelines would direct us to keep that person home, just to be safe. And those types of situations, we may direct them to, to stay at home for that period of quarantine. And again, you know, this is dependent of consulting with the Health Department. If there's ever a question, that's going to be our first call, just to give the expertise. So a little bit further down in the document, Section 8.4, this lists the, the, I don't want to say criteria, but it's really what we're going to use to determine when individuals can return. And actually, Julie's a little bit further down, if I can show you. There are a lot of different scenarios that we have to consider when figuring out what students have to return. One of the key pieces is going to be, have you had close contact with somebody who tested positive for COVID-19? Because depending on whether or not that's a factor, that can really dramatically change the length of time of quarantine. So I'm not going to go through all of these, but if you're interested in the different scenarios, you can go to our handbook and just read a little bit more about how a student or staff member may have to stay out in these various situations.
Excuse me, Matt. Would you please send us that link, because I didn't see it in our board packet after the meeting?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Also, I think it's, it's important to note that in today's communication, that came from the school district to all of our parents, there was a notation, and they're talking about requesting for parents to complete the COVID-19 Student Daily Health Screen prior to sending students to school. So it's a very, it's a very straightforward document. It's a, it's a, it's a health screener, self-check, and it tells you exactly what to be looking for, and, and also letting you know when you should keep your child at home. In order for us to be able to remain in, even on a hybrid mold, we are very, very dependent on our parents, caregivers, whomever is at home with that child in the morning to complete this, to do a temperature check, and to also go through just the list and making sure that there's been no significant changes with their child. So this will need to be completed each time they are coming to the school site in-person. Go ahead.
Sure. So a couple of questions. At one of our last meetings, when Health Director Guerin was here, there was, what I, I guess what I thought was an inconsistency in regards to quarantine period. It sounded like he suggested a cor, a shorter period than what I had understood as being the preferred period. So what is the, what is the period of time of quarantine that the district has an expectation for?
So there are, there are a lot of different variables that could impact that timeline. You know, if, if an individual had contact with somebody who's tested positive for COVID-19, they might be in a different timeline than somebody who hasn't been in contact with someone who has a positive for COVID-19. So from a, like a general sense of things, if an individual, say, has a couple of symptoms that align with the criteria I mentioned before, and hasn't had contact with anyone, generally, what we would do is keep that individual out until they've been symptom-free for 24 hours after a 10-day period, and now they've since had first symptom. Now, again, there are a lot of different factors that could complicate that. If they have been in contact with someone who has a positive for COVID-19, that could be extended to that whole 14-day quarantine. That is probably the, the length that you hear the most often. So like I said, there are, there are a lot of different scenarios that are listed in that, in that document. I encourage you to, to look through that, just to kind of see what those timelines might work like.
Sure. Thank you for that clarification. It's, it's very helpful. So my, my next question is, is related to that, I can't recall what you just called it, Dr. Cartwright, but the, the self-checklist for, for parents to do. I find that to be a really important aspect of, of all of this. And I'm wondering, is, is that something that, and you forgive me, as a parent, I didn't look at my emails in regards to that. If that's been sent out to parents, that's great. But if it hasn't been sent out to parents, I think it'd be really good just to do a...
It has.
It has?
It was, it was in this morning's communic, this morning's communication.
So I haven't gone through today's yet. So, okay, thank you.
I have a few questions, Matt. I have it. So let's, theories. Let's say, or scenarios, I should say. My daughter gets up, I check her, she has a headache and a sore throat. I keep her home. When can I send her back to school? After she doesn't have a sore throat and a headache for 24 hours?
Uh, no. So again, it would depend on some of the circumstances involved.
Okay.
If, and again, I'm one-off remembering here. So if, if your daughter in that instance did not have close contact with someone...
No, none of that. She just wakes up in the morning, has a headache and a sore throat.
So what we would do then is, you know, she'd have to stay out for 10 days from that first symptom, in addition to 24 hours being symptom-free. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yes. I just want to really be clear on this. So one of my kids wakes up in the morning, and they have a sore throat and a headache, and I don't send them to school that day, I call them in. And the next day, or 24 hours later, they feel fine. I cannot send them to school. They have to stay out for 10 days.
Based on our protocol, that is correct. Now, within those 10 days, they can be doing virtual learning.
Okay. And that was, the next question was, is, so if my, if I call in, my child's sick today, and they're sick today and tomorrow, does, do they, that day that they're sick, I mean, if they have a headache, they can still do work? Well, I guess it's up to every parent. That's not normal. But if, if my child just has a sore throat, they can still jump online, they can still check in. Even if they're supposed to be in-person that day, they can still, as a parent, I can choose how sick they are and say, "No, jump online, do your homework," or "She, she is sick, and I'm going to let her, you know, rest for the day." My question is because of allergies. This is allergy season coming up very quickly. As parents, I'm sure we know if our child has allergies or not, but regardless, they shouldn't, you know, I don't know that I would send them to school, because you never know. And they might feel fine to do homework. So if she's home that day but doesn't feel well, can she instantly jump online and start doing homework, even if it's not her day in school? And this might not be a question for you.
Yes. And I see Julie shaking her head too. Yeah, that's one of the benefits of having this hybrid model, as we can transition and out for diseases. And I do want to mention one other thing that I brought this up. So I get a lot of questions about, well, you know, if I, if I have chronic migraines, and I wake up with a splitting headache, does that mean I have to stay home? And, and one of the key words in our criteria, a couple of words, is beyond baseline. So if you know where your baseline is...
Thank you, okay.
That I wake up with a migraine most days, that should then trigger you to have to stay home. So if people know what their baseline are, parents know what the child's baseline is. Now, if your symptoms are excessively worse than what they typically would be, so say I do wake up with a headache, but today it's unbearable, beyond what it typically is, that, that should be a trigger point for you too, to say, "Okay, maybe I should stay home today."
Thank you. That makes a big difference for, I think, a lot of parents. If it's that baseline, you know your child, you know, okay. And, and teachers themselves too, and staff, that they know. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, that's it. Go ahead, Ms. Carla.
Okay. I, I apologize. I am still so confused. So if a child is sick and the parent decides not to send them to school because of headache, maybe COVID, maybe not, they still stay home for 10 days?
Again, there are, there are a lot of different variables in there. So it's, it's hard to say definitively that's what would happen. There are other scenarios where, you know, say the parent takes the child to the doctor, and the doctor says, you know, "This isn't COVID, this is XYZ." You know, that timeline went significantly short at that point.
Okay.
And, and we want to consult with, with the document based on the Health Department to make sure that's what they're recommending. Or, you know, somebody is systematic and gets a, a negative COVID test, you know, that could potentially shorten the timeline too. So it's really difficult to say definitively that, you know, it would be 10 days every single time, because that's not necessarily the case.
Okay. Is, I'm, sorry. So is there someone that, when you call your student in, "Sick," to school, and a parent has a whole bunch of questions, is there someone that are going to be able to contact them or call them back to answer those questions? Will each school... Will each school let their students know, their population know, like what, who they can contact at the school and that kind of, will that come out individually at the school level, you think?
Yeah, so those questions can be directed to the school nurse.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And our school nurses are very well versed in this.
Okay.
They'll be a great person to contact if they have questions.
Great. And they can use, do that through the secretary, the secretaries at the schools can kind of help guide through that. Perfect.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
And another part of section eight involves the notification process when we have a positive case in the school. And this is something that's probably going to be frustrating for a lot of parents and staff members, but there's very limited information you can share when somebody tests positive. And that's due to privacy rights under the FER book. But basically, all we can share is that someone in the building tested positive. That's it. So I know there are going to be a lot of questions in those instances from staff members, from students, from parents who know, could I have contact with that individual? Unfortunately, you know, there's, there's nothing more we can say beyond what we share with parents at that time. So another piece of section eight is that contact tracing. And I described that a little bit earlier, but essentially, we're supporting the health department in their contact tracing efforts if there is a positive case for someone who has two or three days.
Okay. Again, we want to point out in this presentation, and it'll be made available online to all of our parents and community, that all of these links are here are available in a FAQ. And we have some specific ones that the board has asked us, and so I'm going to ask various members of the team to, to answer the question that they were assigned. So this first one has to do with deep cleaning. Drew, would you please take over for that?
So the daily cleaning and nightly cleaning are going to be kind of a combination. The daily cleaning is going to be a combination of the teaching staff, other staff we have, and then depending on the level of the student, potentially the students as well, when we get into the high school level for sure, and these kids, the students can spray the, spray on their table and be able to walk away. So it's going to be a combination, but again, as Mr. Kammer had mentioned earlier, we have switched at the levels to the plot five, which is a three-minute kill time to assist with the loss of instruction minutes. So that's primarily going to be our daytime. We do have a fairly large order of disinfecting wipes that we have been waiting on for a few months, like everyone else. And when we receive that, we'll be distributing that out mostly at the elementary level to assist with a little bit more cleaning that and disinfecting that can be done just at the spot table or the spot desk. But that's going to be another alternative. And again, all of the products, whether it's the disinfecting sprays or the wipes, they're in a very high demand and there's very little supply. So most everyone is on a waitlist of some kind. The nightly cleaning will be done by the custodial crew. Every building has a backpack spray that has the plot 25. So they'll do the normal cleaning like they typically would, and then in every room, they'll be taking the plot 25 spray and they'll spray it over everything. It's a 10-minute kill time and it doesn't need to be wiped down everywhere, it disinfects whatever it's touching. So that's basically going to be the daily plan for the disinfecting. The recess equipment will be done at the end of the day. A lot of the buildings have already been going over this plan today. This is the, for the most part, this will be the only time plot 25 is used by staff at the elementary level. Will be at the end of the day, they'll have a bottle or two of plot 25 that they can spray all the individual equipment with and then be able to walk away as it dries. And then the custodians, as they get on cleaning the room, they can put the equipment back into the boxes or whatever the storage containers are. So that, that's kind of the process for that.
The next question in our Q and A is, why are we allowing high school students to leave for lunch? Great question. Students who leave for lunch first are in small groups, they're not en masse, so that's very helpful. So it means less chance of any kind of contact. The second thing it does when students, and a lot of students do go out for lunch at the high school level, and by the way, this is only the high school level, it reduces the number of students in the building, which it helps us during the lunchtime. The next point is, you know, there's just been so many things that have been modified or taken away from students, and this is one thing that can, can provide some normalcy for the students in already a very challenging year. So again, lunchtime, by the time they get to their car, get to the restaurant and come back, is a very limited amount of time that they'll be together. They'll spend much more time together in school than they will in any vehicle or at any restaurant. And then the district doesn't have the capacity to serve every student at the high school in our social distancing model right now. So again, it helps us in a way. And again, it's what I would say is a win-win. Dr. Gunlock, could you come up and speak, Dr. Gunlock, to the Chromebooks and to that question, please?
There really shouldn't be much of a change to the process that we've used in the past when Chromebooks don't work. We have a well-developed process with TRA and our media specialist team. So a student, pre-COVID times, if they had a problem with their Chromebook, they would take it into the media center, they would receive a loaner, their device would go into a PIN, it would then be repaired at the next opportunity, usually in a few days, and they will get their Chromebook back. And we anticipate continuing that process. Obviously, if, if students are at home learning and not coming back into school, that they will be sort of a, you know, we anticipate that our facilities will still be open for that type of self-service. So we don't anticipate really any changes whatsoever in that regard.
So talking about educational time if they're sanitizing, there's a lot of things that are going in place, but teachers will be disinfecting as they go, so it'll be very fast. I think more important is to know that no matter what they're doing, if it's going book shopping, the kids are washing their hands before they go book shopping, they're washing their hands after they go book shopping. So that's throughout the day. And then the other piece that I think is important for people to know is that we have purchased math kits and magnetic letters and things that usually kids share with one another, but they'll have their own kit that they'll be using so they won't be cross comparing them. Okay. And is there going to be any, is there flexibility in regards to curriculum and grading testing? Yes, at the elementary level, classroom teachers are learning about changes in the curriculum and assessment. They've been doing that on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. Classroom teachers at the secondary level are utilizing campus, they're using management system and grade book, and so that's going to be continuing. And secondary teachers are scoring, grading, record keeping is normal, and so is elementary students. So that, that will maintain the same. As far as flexibility, I think it's also important to know that the, like Bridges is the elementary math curriculum. They have done so much work all spring and summer to get things ready for our teachers. And so they actually went through the curriculum and figured out what is it that kids need, like right in time learning? And it's a whole piece of we're going to accelerate, not remediate. And then they've also figured out, what does this look like? How can we help support our teachers, no matter if we are in-person, A B days, or completely virtual? And so there's a lot of opportunity there. And the same goes with some of our literacy, our literacy coaches are meeting with our teachers and explaining what that will look like in this new model. And will instructional minutes be adjusted to allow for cleaning? Again, we disinfect them throughout the day, kids will be washing their hands throughout the day, so there's really not an adjustment to instructional minutes.
So the next question is, what would be the response if these students or staff had COVID-19? So anytime has reported a positive case, we really consult with the Bigelow County Health Department. And in most instances, they will already have had contact with that individual and would have laid out the timeline for when they can potentially return to work or school. The timeline again, I think here, depending on a lot of different circumstances, but in most instances, if somebody did test positive, the timeline would be 24 hours symptom-free, 10 days past the first symptom. There are some situations where somebody is asymptomatic, so hasn't had any symptoms, may test positive for COVID-19. In those instances, rather than 10 days from that first symptoms, it would be 10 days from when that sample was collected where they tested positive. Next question is, what do the isolation rooms look like? So because the spaces in our schools are so different, the isolation rooms look a little bit different than everything in our buildings, but there are some key pieces that are consistent. One of them being ventilation. All of our isolation rooms have to have ventilation in order to use. It also needs to be a space that is in the vicinity of the health room. Now, most of our health rooms are in the office area, so a lot of our isolation rooms are other offices. In some instances, there are other offices in the vicinity of the health room or offices that have ventilation. So in some of those instances, we have to get creative with the spaces that we're using. But in addition to having proper ventilation, it has to also have a newer way to observe the student from outside of the room. We don't want to put anybody actually in the room with a student who is symptomatic unless they have health needs that would require a level of assistance. So they'll be observed from outside the room until their parent arrives and be escorted to the access.
The next question is, how will subbing be handled this year with the various models? As Dr. Jones has stated, we have a critical sub shortage. Dr. Cartwright has talked about some of the ways we are attempting to deal with that. Again, I had a conversation with staff at UWO in order to possibly look at utilizing some of their students to come in and sub. We will also be utilizing the sub plan that we developed last year, which basically entails kind of all hands on deck. We're going to have to really pitch in to be able to provide coverage for classrooms for our students.
Next question is, what will occur if a student is sent to school with symptoms? As Dr. Cartwright mentioned earlier, we are really encouraging parents to put their students through that screening process each and every day, which involves a temperature reading and answering the symptom questions that were presented earlier. But if a student is sent to school with symptoms or if they become symptomatic at school, we would immediately isolate that student, call the parents to come pick up their child, and then at that point, we would backtrack and disinfect any areas that's being accessed that day.
The next question is, what type of notice will be provided to families and staff as we transition through models of instruction? The district will do everything in its power to communicate with all stakeholders through text, email, and voicemail as appropriate through the Infinite Campus Portal. As stated in previous communications, the issues associated with COVID changed very quickly, and the district will attempt to notify everyone as soon as possible. This change could include select buildings, as I said already, not necessarily the entire district. So it could be just isolated to a building or a group of buildings.
And what I believe is the last question is, are staff going to be tested for COVID-19 prior to school starting? The short answer to that is no. The reason for that is, from everything that we're hearing, the county does not have the capacity to do that. And that would be a very temporary solution. Obviously, if somebody tests positive or tests negative one day, you know, there's nothing saying that they wouldn't test positive, you know, a couple of days or a week later. So at this point, there's no plan to test students or staff.
At this point in board, this concludes our presentation workshop for you, and we would entertain any questions that you may have.
What is going to be the process if we have a student who refuses to wear a mask?
Great question.
Dr. Jones?
Okay. If, if a student refuses to wear a mask, we'll treat it like any other behavior that they didn't follow the rules. So they'll be worn first, and then again, we'll follow our normal procedure for that. But again, the expectation is, is that everyone, excuse me, everyone will be, be wearing a mask. It will be required, it is not optional.
If they have asthma or some other reason they can't wear a mask, will they get a shield?
Mr. Kammer?
Yeah, so there's, there are different levels of accommodations that can be made for students who have health impairments. So we know not all students can wear the type of mask that you and I are wearing today, so a great option for a lot of students is a health shield, but for some of our students that won't work either. So there are other ways that we can protect our students, not only themselves, but the students around them, if the typical face coverings won't work, which include strategically placing them in parts of the room where they wouldn't be facing somebody or that are not heavily trafficked. And then we also have our barriers that were purchased that can be utilized for those types of situations as well.
Okay. Thank you. I also had a question regarding large groups. So a while ago, we were saying we were working up to 50. What is it now and what will we have at recess? How many kids will be at recess at the same time? Well, I guess that depends on the school, so that's kind of a tough question, but...
So to the best of our ability, we're trying to keep, at least in the elementary grade levels, we're keeping them in their cubicles for the, for that time.
Okay.
I think the 50 number may be coming from UWO potentially, because if they have classes up, in-person classes, they can do that up to 50, but once that class has more than 50 or more, then that's when they're making, they were making the decision to go virtual. But again, the, we've, we have added on additional lunch periods in our secondary schools in order to keep the numbers down. Oftentimes, the recess period is also awful, also fall opposite of that. And our principals are actively working on solutions in order to, again, keep those groups, group sizes down.
Okay. I was, I was just honestly wondering and curious if the health department had raised that number up yet.
At this point in time, specifically even with our athletic program, we're still in phase one, one A of that. I believe the maximum that they're allowing is, Mr. Kammer, I think 20, is that correct?
Yeah, it's 10 indoors and I think it might be 25 outdoors. I'll have to take a closer look, but...
Okay.
Anyone have any further questions?
I'm sorry, I have so many questions. The other question I had is, we've been getting emails from parents who are concerned about little kids carrying their backpacks all day, especially the kinders with all their supplies and it could get really heavy. So are they going to be able to leave things in their classrooms? Like, I know we can't share supplies, but will they be able to lighten their load a little bit?
Dr. Brown?
The students won't be carrying their backpack all day, so we're talking about the end of the day. It's going to depend on what's all in there. So if, there's going to be some pieces that they will have to take home, so it may vary each day, but the Chromebook, they will be able to do a lot of the work on the Chromebook as well. And so even some of the manipulatives are their screens that they can do things with on the Chromebook. So I think it'll be okay. If we ever go virtual, then their backpack is going to be really big.
Okay.
Dr. Brown, can you also just do a clarification related to the... Dr. Brown, can you also just do a clarification related to the Chromebooks in elementary school?
Sure. So the Chromebooks are going to be passed out right away at the beginning of school, but they will not be going home until the third week of school. And we're doing that because we need the kids to understand how to use Google Classroom or Canvas in order to do the virtual work, so that teachers need to teach them how to use it.
And can you clarify what they will be doing at home then on the virtual day?
For the first two weeks, they will be doing more like homework, like the typical thing that you would see coming home for the first two weeks. And then after that, they will be involved in actual virtual school on the days they are home.
And then my very last question is, do all our schools currently have the required items for the handbook? Is everything...
Are you talking about protective ears?
Yeah, just is every school all set to go with these and no shortages or anything like that?
Yeah, so from a PPE standpoint, pretty much everything's been distributed. The barriers that I mentioned are, if they haven't been distributed already, will be finished up tomorrow. We have the barriers, as Dr. Jones mentioned, in place for all of our school offices. All of our lunch serving lines now have the Plexiglas barriers over the food as well. There are some other areas that we are now going back and taking a look at where we need to add a barrier, for instance, on our health office desks. That might be one area that we look at. So that's just, we're finishing up that process. But by and large, everything that we need to have in place is in place at this point.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Anyone have any further questions? All right, thank you, guys. Thank you very much, that was really good. Okay, moving on to the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material of each and has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Does anybody have an item they wish to be pulled?
I do.
Mr. Peschel?
Sure. For the, it's number nine. So the One Step Movement for Professional Educators.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I would like to pull 7B. Okay, so the board will consider approval of: 1. Minutes of July 15, 2020, regular board meeting. 2. Minutes of August 5, 2020, special board meeting. 3. Minutes of August 12, 2020, regular board meeting. 4. Minutes of August 12, 2020, executive session of regular board meeting. 5. Minutes of August 17, 2020, special board meeting. 6. Bills payable. 7. Personnel, A appointments, temporary appointment, resignations, and salaries. 8. Adoption and purchase of eye-ready diagnostic assessment instruction for the 2021 school year. 10. One Step Movement for Eligible Ashkesh Prior Professionals. 11. One Step and Lane Movement for Eligible NTEA. 12. Longevity Movement for the Eligible Extracurricular Employees. 13. One Step and Lane Movement for Eligible Food Service Employees. And finally, 14. One Step Movement for Administrator and General Exempt, Nonexempt Employees.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Slodgy?
Aye.
Okay, we'll start with 7B. And we're going through, be it resolved that the Ashkesh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirements as filed by the Secretary of Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
In place of Barb, I would like to continue on with her always talking about our retirements and giving some acknowledgement to these people who have given so much to our district. We have, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 people in our district that are moving on to retirement. We have Susan Hole, Holy, I'm sorry if I pronounce your name incorrectly. She's at Carl Treger, and she's a media assistant, and she has been in the district for 25 years, since 1995. We have Heidi Lowen, she's been in the district for 17 years. She was an ID teacher over at West. Deborah Nelson, she was a media assistant at Reed Elementary. She was here for six months. Deborah Scharfenberg, it's a cook helper, she's been in the district for 13 years. Sharon Utteck, an ID teacher assistant over at West that has been here for 26 years. And Patricia Van Sistin, who is a media assistant at Webster Stanley Elementary School. She's also been here for 13 years. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate all these people and wish them luck on their new journey for the next part of the chapter of their life. And thank you for your service. You take the roll, please, Jacque.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Slodgy?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Be it resolved that the Ashkesh Area School District Board of Education approve One Step Movement for Eligible Professional Educators as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Peschel?
Sure. I just want to be consistent in regards to acknowledging the potential of conflict here. In this case, there is no potential conflict because my wife is a brand-new teacher and is not under this element here in regards to the steps and the movement.
Okay, this is her first year?
But to be consistent, I'm still going to abstain from it because it does create the pattern that I'm acknowledging that potential conflict.
Great, thank you, Mr. Peschel. Okay, call the roll.
Garner?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Peschel?
Abstain.
Slodgy?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. There are no individually considered resolutions. Moving on, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Mr. Peschel?
I may have one. The Raptor system, that when we approved that last year...
The what system?
We like the entrance system into the schools.
Oh, yes, yes.
We went into COVID, like COVID mode, right when that went into effect. And so if we want to have gone into COVID mode, that would have been a highly contested issue at that point. There were parents that were really concerned with it. And so I wanted, I guess I would like to, after like the first month of school is in place, to see, is to come back to that and review that and see what issues may have arisen from that and just have a general discussion of how that's proceeding.
So were we thinking more of like administrative report or a workshop on it?
I'd say...
Or maybe just when they get there first or working on it, let us know?
Yeah, just let's leave it at that at this point. But let's say the first meeting in October, if we make it October, that we have some type of report back on that.
Dr. Cartwright, good.
We can most certainly prepare a written report on that and then allow for any questions that the board may have.
Yes. That'd be good, thank you.
And if we have any questions that we might want to have answered...
Right, because they can probably be pulled up.
And we also encourage people to please, I believe on our website, we already had previously communicated related about the Raptor and have put out a communication that would probably address a lot of the questions and a lot of the misinformation that is in our community.
Okay, right, okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Carlin?
I would like to add, when our administrators are ready for an update on our Diversity and Inclusion Committee and let us know how that's going. And it doesn't have to be necessarily our next meeting, just put it on the...
Get it on the future agenda?
Yeah, when they have something to report. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, anyone have announcements to make?
Just a general reminder, again, for parents, if you'll please continue to check your email-related, the email that's associated with your IC portal, we would be very grateful for that. We're trying to ensure that large messages are coming from the district. But we also know that our principals are sending out a lot of specific information related to their schools. And so again, just trying to refocus that big messages, you know, that are across the entire district, we will be continuing to send that out at that district level. But very specific information, we're trying to reconnect our parents back to their homeschools or where their children are going to be going to school. And so please, if you have questions, please feel free to reach out to the appropriate principal as well as to us. I know I said this at the last board meeting, but again, you're, so I'm not trying to sound like a broken record, but just emphasizing again for everybody, please remember where your face coverings. Please practice social distancing. Please, if you're sick, stay home, don't go anywhere. And make sure that you are washing your hands on a regular basis or when you don't have that available to you, using the proper hand sanitizer as well. Because our actions collectively as a community drives what is happening within our schools and the type of decisions that we will be making. And I'm doing that as a gentle reminder, because we do know that the Labor Day weekend is coming up as well. And as much as I know we all want to take advantage of some of that, please remember what all of those precautions are so that we are keeping one another safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we'd like to adjourn to executive session. For one, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, State Statute 19.851E, A, evaluating a teacher contract.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who was the first on the motion? Okay, thank you. Olmstead?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Slodgy?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned into executive session.
Thank you.